Newport City Special Council Meeting is called to order at 10:04 a.m. President of the meeting are Councilmembers President John Wilson, Councilwoman Charbonneau, Councilman Vascon, Councilman Curtis. Other members present at the table, City Clerk and Treasurer Mr. Johnson, Controller and Mr. Terion. Additional staff in the room are Frank Cheney, Tom Bernier, Police Chief Brigham. Did I miss anybody? Oh, my round. I'm sorry. Apologies.
Hard for me to see.
Thank you. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the primary spokesperson for nonviolent activism and racial justice in the civil rights movement, protesting racial discrimination in state and federal law. After his assassination in 1968, there was a major push for a federal holiday designated to commemorate King's legacy. The holiday was signed into law by President Ronald Raedel in 1983, but wasn't observed until 1986. The bill also formed the Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday Commission to oversee the observance of the holiday. Coretta Scott King, Martin Luther King Jr.'s wife, was honored with a lifetime appointment to his committee in 1989. Although federal recognition occurred in the late 1980s, it wasn't until the year 2000 that Martin Luther King Day was observed in all 50 states. Martin Luther King Day is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. During the last quarter century, the Martin Luther King Day of Service has grown and its impact increased as more Americans embraced the idea that citizenship involves taking an active role in improving communities. The nonprofit run by King's family, the King Center, says the theme for Martin Luther King Day in 2024 is "Shifting the Cultural Climate Through the Study and Practice of Kingian Nonviolence." It's about using nonviolent solutions to address injustice and violence around the world. I ask that you please watch this.
In high school, Martin Luther King Jr. wins an oratorical contest stating, "Black America Still Wears Chains." On the bus ride home, King is forced to stand so white passengers can sit down. To satisfy his urge to serve humanity, King joins the seminary and begins to fight for social justice. After leading the Montgomery Bus Boycott, the King family homes bombed. He continues on organizing nonviolent protests in Albany and Birmingham before the March on Washington. King wins the Nobel Prize for his dynamic leadership and organizes the Salma's Montgomery marches, expanding his political focus to include poverty and opposition to the Vietnam War. At the height of his political influence, Martin Luther King Jr. is assassinated. The Civil Rights Act of 1964, the crowning achievement of the civil rights era, would not have been possible without the courage of Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you. In the days surrounding the observed holiday, schools and businesses center Dr. King's message, seminars, and civil rights history through lessons and events or acknowledgements. Many places are closed, but those who are off hopefully don't just treat Martin Luther King Day as another day off. There are those who are not given the day off but believe they should be to commemorate Martin Luther King and what he did for our country. While Newport is one municipality that has not traditionally closed its offices for the federal holiday and the city employees are having to work today keeping Newport residents safe and continuing with business, I'd like to take this time with my fellow councilmembers and city employees to respectfully acknowledge him and thank him for his life's message as a leader in civil rights history. I would also like to say that I believe that Martin Luther King Day should be recognized as a city holiday and that while the prior mayor and council appeared to have somewhat of a discussion about Martin Luther King Day at one of their prior council meetings where they indicated what appeared to be a de minimis cost was too high for another holiday and curiously used union negotiations as another reason to be one of the very few who refused to close its doors in honor of Martin Luther King Day, it should be noted the unions' movement is "deliver the dream" with unions demanding that Martin Luther King Day be in their labor contracts as a non-work holiday. I would have voted to have the city of Newport unite with the federal government and our state of Vermont government and fellow Vermont municipalities as they honor Martin Luther King for what he did for our country in addressing civil rights and advancing equal freedom for all. Citizens must take an active role in improving communities. Let's not stop improving Newport. Next item on the agenda is additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. President Wilson? President Charbonneau? I'm sorry, not President Council. I just demoted you. Councilman Vascon? Councilman Curtis? Treasurer Johnson? I would like to make a motion. I would ask that we move to add the following item to the agenda, following additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. A motion that Martin Luther King Day be observed as a non-working city holiday in Newport with paid time off contingent upon acceptance by the union. We have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
May I have a roll call?
Roll call, please. Councilman? 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 Next item on the agenda is the motion that Martin Luther King Day be observed as a non-working city holiday in Newport contingent with paid time off pending the acceptance by the union. I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Comments? Further discussion by the council? Ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
I think you heard him your first time. Aye.
No, it's the second motion. That's why he's asking.
I understand.
Councilman? Councilman? Next item on the agenda is public participation. We're going to be opening the floor to public comment for each agenda item. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing councilmembers to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time that city council discussion discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be offered a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting, and I thank you. We are now going to the actual comments by the public. When your name is called, please use the microphone. Identify your affiliation, if any. You will have two minutes. Would you mind? Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Beurling?
Hello, Jennifer Beurling, resident of Newport, Vermont, high school teacher. In a recent article entitled Thoughts From the Mayor, Lynda Joy offered statements inclusive of quotation marks that residents supposedly made at council meetings. Curiously, all of these quotes were copied and pasted from a presentation written by David Fleishman, who is a city attorney for Pacific Grove, California. In a public documents request, the city was asked to produce the minute markers in the meeting videos wherein the residents supposedly made the statements. The city refused to produce specific evidence of the residents' supposed statements, claiming that it had no legal obligation to do so. The mayor, who was ceded on the request, offered no response. Hence, contrary to Lynda Joy's representation, it appears that the Newport residents never made these statements. The entire situation is very bizarre and it causes one to wonder if Newport residents need to add truthfulness to the list of their concerns about our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Charillo?
Sorry, I'm not drunk, just a little unstable. First of all, I wanted to thank you so much for making Martin Luther King Day a recognized holiday. I know subject to union input. It's wonderful. We tried any number of times a couple of years ago to do it and I thank you so much because it'll be a role model for children in schools and it'll teach us all how to behave just a little bit better to each other, so it's wonderful. The second thing, I don't have to make any more speeches about Martin Luther King, thank God. The second thing I wanted to talk about was just the formatting. Kevin raised last time a good issue. He showed how difficult it is for the public who needs to understand the budget in order to vote and approve it, how difficult it is. He got to line 15 of the budget dealing with the city manager and he noted there was a 16.5% increase. And then he was talking about Rebecca's salary and he was trying to figure out, well, if part of her salary is somewhere else, is it only 8% that it's being increased? Which isn't true. No one responded at the time. It's 16% across the board. But the important thing was they said to him at that point, well, the other part of it is in water and sewage, and then you can find it. If you go to water and sewage, what you find is a conglomerate for sewage administration of 100,000, 620 to the salaries and a 9% being a 9% increase. How could Kevin possibly figure out how much of Rebecca's salary is in that 100,000? How can anybody in the public do it? It needs to be broken down into six or seven lines for all the people where the transfers are recurred over there so that a person can look at it and say, oh, that's right, there's Rebecca's salary and it's a portion correctly. The only one we can do that for is the police chief because the police chief only has one person in administration and we can add up all of his little portions of his salary, which is separated into little parts and pieces, and figure out what it is. We need to be able to do that for everything. Please think about reformatting the budget as soon as you possibly can so that it's clear to Kevin and to us, all of whom have to vote on the budget in the end, either now or when we vote in March.
Thank you for your comment. I'd just like to clarify one thing if you don't mind. The motion that was passed to have Martin Luther King Day be recognized is a holiday. The only contingency is whether it's a paid-off holiday, but it is a holiday now in New York City.
Thank you.
Ms. Lacks?
I just want to, in this panel as from the Newport, I just want to endorse gratitude for finally putting Martin Luther King on the agenda and talking about it in a way that civilized, helpful, and supportive of all of us going forward. We really had to fight for that and we got trashed along the way. So this is really refreshing and we appreciate that. It gets a really important holiday, whether it gets recognized by everybody in that way or not. It is important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and I thank my councilmembers as well. Ms. Patterson?
Good morning. I'm Melissa Patterson. I'm a citizen of Newport. And I have a question, which I realize that will not be answered because this is public comment, but I just want to put it out there. So regarding Martin Luther King Day, I was part of the council back when that first came around, as was John Wilson and another member. And it started out as a request to not have a meeting on Martin Luther King Day because it was Martin Luther King Day and how dare we have a council meeting? When it was pointed out it was a day of service, then it morphed into this whole thing about it being, give the day off to everyone, which is fine. Everyone likes holidays. I don't have any objection to that. However, we do have a negotiated agreement. So it come forward a couple of years and here we are. Kudos to the council for giving a paid day off to people. You know, everybody needs time off. I don't have any objection to that. However, the city just concluded this year, I believe, a negotiated agreement with all public employees, both the police department and the public works department. If this was the will of the council, why was this not included in the negotiation process? I'm a little bewildered by that because again, as I said, it was a negotiation process that went on. If it was the will of the council, why wasn't it not included at that time rather than afterwards, after the fact, without even reopening a contract arbitrarily, just assigning a new holiday? Again, I don't object to holidays. Everyone deserves them. Everyone likes them. But I do object to the process and the willingly process that the council is now operating under its new leadership. So again, I realize that my question will not be answered, but it can be pursued at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next item on the agenda is the budget review for the anticipated vote. I would like a motion, please, to open the budget up for discussion. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Let's get going. Yes, I recognize our controller. Thank you very much for all your hard work on this.
So Madam Mayor, Council, and Newport City residents, I want to address a few things in regards to the general fund budget. And in this respect, I'm only specifically talking to the general fund, although it flows into water and sewer, and what our budget process is. This process starts with the controller creating a spreadsheet for the new budget year, filling in salaries and benefits based on the union negotiated contracts, then inserting such costs as VLCT insurance, signed contracts such as the ambulance, CASLIS, SWIPE, NECA, grant administration, et cetera, memberships and dues, the Orleans County tax, VLCT dues, NCDD, and MBDA, and debt service, et cetera. These are known costs that have been agreed to that we need to insert. Then I give access to the spreadsheet to the department heads for them to look at the rest of their budget and fill in those numbers. Some examples of those would be communications, supplies, materials, professional contracted services, repairs and maintenance, et cetera, and the capital expenditure section. And then anything else that they may want to propose for that year to add to their budgets. We then meet as a team and we look at the budget to see where we're at and what changes need to be made because during this process, we are very in tune to what the bottom line looks like. Then we normally sit down with the mayor and we go through that budget with the mayor and see how the mayor feels about that budget and what the mayor would like to bring forward before the council, knowing what the climate is. This proposed budget that we presented to the council this year has been the most difficult budget we have presented to them. And we all know the 16% increase is a huge ask to the taxpayers of the city of Newport. And it's a hard pill to swallow for all of us. However, this is what it will take to continue running the city while maintaining the same services that the residents are used to and expect. There are a few main reasons why the budget is up. Some increases aren't within the control of city department heads and administration and in some cases even in control of the city council. I'd like to address a few of these increases. Please note that the following numbers are rounded. They are not meant to be exact to the dollar. Since the pandemic started in 2020, we have seen unprecedented increases. Some of the largest increases are in the following expenses, which are the city's biggest expenses. Double-digit increases in costs such as union negotiated contracts, salary, and benefits. Health insurance increases of 21.5% as of July 1st of 2023 and 14.2% increase on July 1st of 2024. We normally don't see double-digit increases in health insurance and needless to say, two years in a row. VLCT insurance, which covers our property casualty, liability, crime, and auto, increased by 21.5% on July 1st, 2023, and increased by 14.2% on January 1st, 2024. Given these double-digit increases in the city's largest expenses, it is unreasonable to expect that the bottom line increase can be anything less than a double-digit increase. Here's a quick list of expenses by the type and not by the department. And I also went back and did a quick history of the city municipal tax rate. Just municipal, not voted appropriations, veterans exemption, school, or any of that. And it goes back to 1992 only because that was quickly available information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, is it possible?
Excuse me?
Just to enlarge the screen so we can see it? Is that possible?
We're checking to see.
Okay, thank you. You can use your bar at the bottom too, Becky, and you might be able to find a sweet spot. Off on the bottom right-hand side? Yeah.
Okay, thank you for trying. Okay, councilmembers, would you like to begin discussing the budget? Councilman Charbonneau? President Wilson?
Sorry, what's the question?
Do you like to begin discussing the budget?
Yeah, I'd like to go over what Becky has done and written.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, can we start with that?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Becky, seeing as hard to see on that screen, did you tell people how much the tax rates increased over the last 30 years? I don't know if they can all see that.
Thank you.
So from '92 to '24, which is 32 years, the tax rate increased 39 cents.
Thank you.
Is that for $100 per assessed value?
Yes.
Or $1,000 per assessed value?
Say it one more time. Did you hear the question? Could you just repeat the question so everybody could hear it?
What 39 cents in the last 30 years or so? What is that based on? $100, $1,000 per assessed value? $1,000?
Right, but I just wanted everybody to hear it.
Okay, for $100?
See, he couldn't hear it. Yes.
I think it's important that people see that. So in 32 years, it took 32 years that tax rate to increase 39 cents was just a little over any year.
Just want to make sure that everybody can hear this because it's so important. So we may have to pass the microphone. Okay, you'll go to the red line items now.
So this section, I updated the numbers because I had actually double-counted the vacant because I had actually double-counted the vacation and holiday pay. And so, that's the effect it had on those certain numbers, which I think was around $5,800, roughly. Want to move on to the next one?
Please, you're in control of this.
So, the next section made a change to was the professional expense under stormwater maintenance. Tom had noted when he presented his budget that that number could be 90,000 instead of 100,000. Under debt service. So, under debt service through the top of the screen, the fire, education, equipment lease, I had to add that in. That was approved on December 20th, sorry, December 27th of 2023. And then down below, under bridge cover routine and wall, that's been reduced from 70,000 to 25,000. So, those were the changes to the general fund budget. The changes in the water and sewer budgets are the 50,000. The back to sinking fund, we decreased from 100,000 to 50,000 in both sewer and down here in the water fund.
Council members, do you have any questions regarding those changes? Okay, let's start on the budget for discussion.
I'm not sure where you guys want to go from here. So, those are the changes I made in the budget.
It was mentioned last meeting that the water and sewer budget were having a deficit for several years and that a increase was needed of 101% to the sewer, up 5% to the water. Last meeting, we noted that the water and sewer budget, as explained by Mr. Johnson, were having a shortfall and that a 21% increase in sewer was needed, as well as a 5% in water. Does this budget reflect those?
So, there's no rate increases that are figured into that budget.
Should we figure those rate increases in?
So, we're so far behind on our revenue that even if we level fund this budget or probably go backwards on that, we still need a rate increase. Because we not only have to try to make up for our shortfall in revenue, but we also have to try to get the general fund back.
Right, that's my question. So, we need to increase it 101% in sewer and 5% in water?
That 21% increase is only going to catch us up currently. It's got nothing to do with what goes to the general fund. That is for what projected loss is going to be for this current time. To get us to break even point. And it'll have to go up, I assume, the more things cost. It'll have to go up again in another year. And if we're going to try to pay back the general fund a million and a half, that's probably double that increase for some time. That's where we are in the water and sewer. We're so far behind now that it's just getting worse and worse. So, if you increase it 21% today in the sewer, those rates would make up for a year's worth of loss, the current loss. It's got nothing to do with the past, which is pre-time for the current.
Any comments or questions on that or the discussion on that?
I don't know what the thing. Conversation I had with Mr. Johnson was...
Thank you.
Fifty?
You have to hold it up if you get to.
No, I don't.
You can't hold it. You have to hold it up.
So, the conversation I had with Mr. Johnson, it was more than 30%. It was 25 and 5.
Yeah, I think that included the back stuff, Clark, and over it. To get just the current, the break even in a current year, it'd be 21% now. We don't know what it's going to be next year. It may be, I mean, it may have to go up a little bit again next year. The cost of everything's increasing. But if you want to include the back, or the general fund, I would say another 30% would be a minimum in order to make that up. And that would have to go on for several years, I think.
Is there any money set aside for meters?
Meters?
Yeah.
I have no idea. That's a Tom question.
Thirty, 38,000. I don't know how much a meter costs.
Mr. Benier, only if you'd like to address this, do you have any input on that? Only if you'd like to address that, do you have any input on that, just for clarification?
I'm just looking.
Take your time.
So, currently, I kept it the same. We've budgeted 38,000 in water and 38,000 in wastewater for replacement of meters. And if you look, yeah, we didn't spend as much. But this past year, we've been understaffed and I've got to turn over staffs. So, it's been a little tough to maintain keeping meters in. But we are still putting them in. So, at some point, you know, each meter, our cost is about $270 or so for all the materials.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman?
I know there needs to be an increase. I'm just not sure the timing on top of this budget increase would be kind of compounding for residents, but it's definitely needed.
Well, even if you increase water and sewer this month or February, sometime in February, that wouldn't take effect until September 15th payment. Because we're billing a quarter behind.
That's right. Yeah, then I'd support an increase in water and sewer. We want to discuss the percentage.
Are you available to discuss the percentage right now? Or do you want to wait for that discussion? The council member would like to know.
On the water and sewer?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's got to be. I averaged, I went back, I think, eight quarters. I went back to 2016, as a matter of fact. And that's what the average loss was, 21%. All right, so the loss each year is right around anywhere from 450 to 5 and 1/4. Okay, I think a 21% increase would probably get you to that range. Like I said, it's not going to help you further back because it already holds the general fund. If I was going to increase it to the 21, I'd go 25% to make sure that it had enough. The other thing is, the more meters they get put in, less water is going to be used. And if the cost of operation stays the same, then the rates can have to go into compensate for that. They'll have to look to compensate.
Thank you.
Could we possibly get some documents, some numbers out there and maybe put it on the next agenda? By the way, I just like, want to see the numbers and crunch them myself as well.
Yeah, I can do that. I may even, I don't know if I brought a copy of that.
Mr. Benier?
Keep in mind too, the water channel project, once that's in play, that's going to increase the water rates. That's right. I think waiting is only going to hurt us even more. I would think doing more than what we're just going to capture to get us where we need to be now and actually help to pay the general fund back would be a better solution. I know that's a big ask, but we're just getting further and further behind.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tom's right. If we have to borrow 2 or 3 million dollars for that water fund, the water fund's going to pay that back, too. And that's already been approved.
What would that need to be? You had mentioned 5%.
That'll be, well, that'll be anywhere from 100,000 to 150,000, depending on how many years we go and how much it is per year for that long.
So, any other discussion on this budget now? Or questions, council members? So, what I'm hearing is that we will be getting some numbers...
I can go back. I've got that somewhere. I just can't...
Right, and we can sit and go through it.
I have to go through my pile on my desk to find it.
Sure. And please, jump in that we'd like to move this. We're not going to have a vote now. We're going to continue the discussion now. When we're done discussing it, the actual vote on the budget will be placed on the agenda next, on Monday.
This budget or?
Well, we'll have to vote yes or no on this budget. And then we have to vote on a budget. So, we have to present a number to the public. So, we're going to have to figure out what's going on.
So, my thought would be that the rate increase would be a separate vote outside the budget.
And we can decide that as well, but...
That way, we can vote on the budget yere and eh today and then have a discussion another day of the water and sewer changes.
If you think, discuss that, if you'd like to do that or do you want to push the budget? I'm going to go with what your council's deciding.
Yeah, I'm opening up.
So, you would like to finish the discussion, have the vote on the budget, but then go to next agenda, next meeting, and discuss the rate?
Yeah.
So, we would vote on this pending the rate or vote on this as it is?
That's where my discussion's leading, what we're deciding on that part.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Where, council member, what's your thoughts on that?
Voting on the budget? I'm not sure I understand.
Would you re-clarify that? Maybe, let me give you a microphone, so.
Just to help things move forward, we vote on the budget yere and eh and then have a separate discussion like we have in the past about water and sewer rates and then possible increase after that.
And then add that on to the budget?
Yes.
Just a discussion, it's two different.
The water and sewer, the budget is the budget. You pass that budget, the rates are separate. You have to raise the rate and pay for the budget. There's no rate increases in the budget. The budget is the expense, period. Then you have to raise the rates to hopefully raise enough money to pay the expenses.
Do you understand that? Are you okay with that, microphone?
The council is a water commission, so they can raise the rates anytime they want. So, there's no rate increases in it. You figure out an expense budget over here, and then you got to raise the rate, try to raise that money to pay the expenses.
Thoughts, council member?
What Chris wants to do is decide on the budget.
Right, but I wanted...
Not worry about raising the rate.
I just want to, and thank you for clarifying that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands and this is our time to discuss it. So, I want to make sure that all the discussion happens and so we're making informed decisions.
What is the breakdown of the 25%? 21 is sewer?
Yeah, 21, well, I'm going to approximate. Figure about 21 in the sewer and the water is averaging about a 5%.
So, what is 21% of the sewer budget?
I don't know. I'm going to get a calculator.
I'd like, so I asked for this meeting so we could do what we're doing. I don't know if Frank can help.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Please, go right ahead.
I don't say too much, however, I think you need to, Chris is right. You need to look at this a little bit more. I'm going to tell you why. Okay, Jim, I know he needs his rates fixed. He's been asking for many years. Okay, however, I understand that there are fixed costs associated with this budget. I haven't looked at it in great detail, however, and Tom certainly knows more about it than I do. However, from an accounting standpoint, there are fixed costs, labor, infrastructure, okay? And yes, part of the problem is that the rates went down because water usage, however, understand something. If you've got a family of two, okay, and the cost of this fixed cost within this water and sewer budget is X and you are charging Y, which is below that cost, all right, at $88 or $100 a quarter, for example, and those individuals that are not on a meter are paying $200 a quarter. What's happened is those individuals, although they were told it was going to save them money, so I'm not sure what you're going to tell them now, okay, are not covering the fixed cost of the system. Now, you're going to turn around if you add straight 21% and you're going to take those individuals that are already paying far closer to their fair share or covering their fixed cost and raise them 20%, okay? What you're going to do is get a mass transfer to the meters, which you do not have the capacity to put in. Okay, so if I'm paying $250 for a two-person household or 220 and Jim's paying 100, I'm going to run and get my meter. All right, but you can't put them all in. So, your rate structure is far more complicated that needs to be addressed than 21% across the board, in my opinion, if you want to do this in a fair and equitable manner. Now, Jim's point is well-taken. It's been too long that this has been waited on. However, you can't just throw the number out to the people that have been covering the cost right along. That's not right.
Frank's got a point, but nobody suggested across the board 21% increase. I never said that. Becky's never said that. Nobody's ever said that. So, the rate structure is different. There's no rate amount in the expense budget in the water and sewer. It is what it is. You have to match the rates regardless if it's meters or straight to match the expenses. And he's right, the rate structure is a difficult thing. It will take some...
Council member?
So, what is the 21% increase based on?
Based on the losses for every year back to 2016. Well, based on the average loss.
So, how many meters are we short if everyone were meter?
I have no idea how many meters you're short.
I don't know if...
Only one person can answer that.
Well, I don't know if he has that exact number or if he was prepared for that. Do you know an approximate?
I don't know the exact number. Probably 700, 700, 800, maybe.
Thank you.
So, 800 times... $270, what's that?
800 times 270.
What is it?
316,000?
Say it again.
Three hundred and sixteen thousand.
Thank you.
Two-one-six? So, how long are we going to wait to have everyone metered instead of just having a display on the electronic board that says, "Call for a meter"? So, it has to be done, or we just keep dragging and dragging and dragging and...
It's let the councilman finish. Oh, you're done, okay.
We need personnel to do it, or have it done as part of the water tower project, which was part of that whole process, was hire an out and site company to finish doing all those meters.
And I think the council extended the deadline for meters to two thousand and twenty-seven.
I thought it was two thousand and ninety, it's a twenty-seven?
Yeah, I think, like, Mr. Vashon, we need to vote on this budget, so it can go to print, and then we can start discussing increases in water and sewer. That's a separate end thing anyways. Well, we're here for the budget. Let's fix this, let's see if the taxpayers will support this large increase, and then we'll sit down and decide as a separate issue what water and sewer should be increased. And to sit here and say, well, we could sit here and say, okay, by the end of next week, everybody will be metered. Well, that's a bunch of crap. Tom, if every, all seven hundred, we mandated that, probably going to take three years just to do it because we don't have the capacity, unless you want to start going out to other entities, and then they'll cost, we've been trying to do it ourselves. We start hiring that out, twenty-one percent, you're going to need a forty percent increase. But I agree with Chris, let's do this budget, gets into the annual report, the taxpayers, and we'll decide whether they will support the budget because it is a big increase. And then that's done, now we can start worrying about water and sewer. But right now, we're trying to put that into the budget too, and increases. And, you know, we can discuss for the next six months, but it's got to be put into the annual report, so it can be voted on.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd talk about water meters a little bit and the rate structures. I mean, we've had a couple different committees that gone through rate structures a few different times since I've been involved. And to set a rate structure when half your city's metering the other half isn't, what we've had currently seem like the most equitable and fairest. And to speak about meters, you know, now that everybody's concerned about, why are we going to get the meters in? Well, we've been pushing, I have it out there every year, for people to contact us. I don't have phone numbers of residents, and they're knocking, they're not, haven't been knocking down our door to put meters in either, until now, a discussion comes up that, yeah, we need to raise the rates, so everybody's concerned about the meters. We're not going to be able to put all the meters in unless we do it in a three- to four-year period. I designate, maybe hire an extra person, designate just those people as putting in water meters. Or, we put in a project and get them done. And I can't remember the date that we put it out to, what, twenty-six, twenty-seven? That they had a deadline to get the meters in. So, again, they're not knocking down our door to put meters in. We put a big rate increase in, and they're going, they may, they may not.
Thank you. I think this part is not uncommon for the public, you know, that opportunity.
I think the meters could be put in in a year, if we get three a day, um, or more. The workers telling me more than three a day could be done. I get, the only thing I need to talk about is Tom's number perhaps should be increased on meters. Not disagreeing with anyone, just a little more money in the budget for additional meters, that's...
So, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Madam Mayor, for one, we've been downing employee for six, seven months now to wait for our plant, and I guess it's pretty clear to me and pretty obvious that he's talking to my employees again that I could put in three meters a day. So, if we want to put meters in, yeah, we should look at other avenues to put meters in, but it'd be very nice if you stayed away from my employees, thank you.
Where's your head on voting right now for this budget? Do you want to think about it, or will I go to the next?
I think we should probably vote next time, but Mr. Bernier has lost his mind. I know I've been in construction longer than he's been alive. So, all I'm saying is you need a more aggressive attitude for meters. I don't care who does it, but you can't put meters in and then have a flood the next day in the guy's basement because it was done, done improperly. So, again, putting a, a message on the electronic billboard that says, "Please call for your meter", it's not working. There's people at the water treat sewer plant that can do it. You just have to take time and make it a priority. If, as Mr. Cheney said, you want it to be fair and equitable, everybody has to have a meter. Everybody has a meter for electricity, you have a meter when you put gas in your car. We all need meters. We're dragging the feet, as the previous council and administration did, it's not working. So, it just has to be done properly. And the only thing I'm saying now is perhaps you could put a little more money in for meters so that when all the people do want meters, the city's going to say, oh, we don't have any. So, I'm just saying perhaps a little more money for meters.
So, your thought is to increase that line item in the budget to accelerate?
Yeah. It's not going to get any better unless we have meters.
But I just want to know, make it really clear what you're asking. Councilmember, your thoughts on that?
Um, I'm ready to vote on the budget as is, to be honest.
I have one question.
Yes, please use the microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, could you read back the original motion that was passed regarding the holiday?
No, we're not talking about that right now. We're talking about the budget.
Well, they're going to pass the budget. It may affect the budget.
But we don't have that.
They're talking about the water and sewer budget.
That's correct.
Well, you're talking the general budget, though.
Right now, we're on the water and sewer budget.
So, you're... We want to pass the water and sewer budget now, correct?
Or the entire budget?
The entire budget. Oh, okay. So, he's talked about the entire budget. This question is relevant.
Go ahead.
I just need to know, was the motion passed as a paid holiday, or?
No, 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 no. It was passed as a non-paid holiday pending the discussions with the union to see if it would be a paid holiday.
I may be wrong. I may be jaded, but I think we can look at this as a paid holiday. I can't imagine the union, being a member of the union, saying no to extra money. We should factor that in as well. And it's not going to affect every department, only ones that are, have to show up to work. So, it'll be, it'll be a cost. It won't drive up the budget that much, but we should plan on that cost.
Okay, so unless there are no further comments, I'm hearing that people would like to have a vote on this budget, the majority of councilmembers would like to vote on this budget now. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm okay with that.
I know you're not okay with that. Just remind me one more time, councilmember, if you're all right with voting now?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, so, may I have a motion to please vote for the budget with the incorporated changes as presented today?
So...
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Comments? Ms. Patterson, did you have a comment on this? Because I didn't know, I asked you to wait.
You asked me to wait. I would just, I'd just like to just, just the historical information. I'm glad you're dealing with water and sewer, that's great. I'm glad that you're dealing with water and sewer. It has been kicked down the road for quite a long time. As we mentioned twice, at least, in my recollection of being involved, water and sewer rates were tried to be raised, there was objection from the public, they weren't raised. Also, concerning the sewer, Newport stopped taking leachate as part of objections to taking it, which, you know, reason's fine. But the point is that we lost about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year on that. So, that's another reason why we don't have enough money in water and sewer.
Do you want to say anything to that, or are you good?
She's right. We figured that was likely what happened.
It's complicated. And for those of us who have asked on repeat now for several years for the water and sewer budget to be included in the general budget, meaning that those of you who were on the council actually look at it and vote on it because it has not been a budget that's been voted on, and that has never made any sense. Some of this would have been obvious before if you had looked at it as councilmembers, not water commissioners, who apparently met in a closet somewhere because we never found out when there was a meeting. As far as leachate goes, the leachate was a decision that was made at a state level because leachate is poison, and that was being run through the water treatment system here, a system that couldn't even begin to treat it. It is really unlikely that the state will ever allow that leachate to come back into this system or into the systems of any of the other towns. Currently, some of it's going to Plattsburgh, some of it's going to Montpelier. Montpelier doesn't want it either. They are doing a massive upgrade of their system, which may make a difference. And there is now a treatment for PFAS, allegedly, up at the landfill, which again, might make a difference. But the likelihood of leachate ever coming back here is slim to none. And the idea of counting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it was a hundred and eighty-five, actually, and putting that against the lives of people is pathetic. It is absolutely pathetic.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Bearden.
So, would you mind, so that... Sure, you want me to say it?
Yeah, please, please.
So, what's happening right now is not your fault. You're living the reality of the action of our former city manager, Laura Dolgan. That's, you know, it's all coming home to roost now, and conveniently, she's not here. But back when the water meters first went into effect, and they had the committee that, that Mr. Bernier spoke of to establish the rates, they were at best a shot in the dark because there had not been any meters up until that point. And Mr. Knoll was part of that committee, Ms. Hopkins was part of that committee, and there were others that, that I don't know. What I do know is that, that committee, after the, the meters started to get installed and the rates were in effect for a year or so, a year or two years, they were supposed to reconvene and take a look at the situation. Ms. Dolgan did not allow that to happen. And she, this is hearsay now, but it's coming from a reliable source, so I'll repeat it. But the reports are that she said the city attorneys were going to set the rates, the auditors were going to set the rates. There were many different, like, excuses used, and of course, it never occurred. As that was happening, however, Ms. Dolgan was experiencing somewhat of a windfall because she was taking in more money at that point. Because when the meters went in, the heavy hitters like the prison and Columbia Forest Products and everything started producing more revenue. And you, you see, and if you looked over my, my questions, which I believe you did, you see this, this increase in expenses going to water and sewer. And it's really quite profound when you put it on a timeline and you see it happen. And I have been in here screaming from the mountaintops that the water and sewer doesn't have a revenue problem, they have an expense problem. But if you were to take a look at that expense problem now and, and, and put them in their appropriate places, you can't do that because we're now in a perfect storm. And we have all the other things that are going on in terms of inflation and higher labor rates, and we're already at a sixteen percent increase in our general budget. If we started moving that stuff from water and sewer back where it rightfully belongs, God only knows what the increase would be. So, you're caught between a rock and a hard place, and there's no good answer to this situation. But I wanted to at least highlight that you are living the effects of bad decision-making of Laura Dolgan, and it's all coming home to roost now. I do believe that you're going to, in the future, when perhaps inflation and everything kind of settles out a bit, you're going to have to do the deep dive into water and sewer. You're going to have to look at the expenses that are in there and whether or not they're rightfully located in water and sewer. And, and you're going to have to look at the rate structure, as Mr. Cheney spoke to, because the rate structure that was set up was basically reverse engineered to create a, a two-person household having the exact same bill if, if they were on the fixed rate structure, and using the state average of, of a number of gallons of water for a two-person household. But by doing it that way, by reverse engineering it that way, it creates bias. And that bias needs to be examined and needs to be taken out. And the only way you're going to do that is to actually, like, take a look at that, the structure of the rates and, and, and fix it. The rates right now don't have, like, a fixed base rate in them, which I believe should exist. I think it should be like a connectivity fee, if you will. So, if you're going to hook up to the town's water and sewer supply, you, you pay fifty bucks or whatever it is just to get access to the service. The way the rates are set up right now is they have an artificial floor in them. But what happens is that when you exceed that number of gallons, and that number of gallons is thirteen thousand five hundred, if my memory is correct, because that's the state average for two people. When you exceed that, that's no longer a fixed rate, even though on our water and sewer bills, it says fixed base rate. It's not fixed. It's an artificial floor up to thirteen thousand five hundred gallons, and then beyond that, it kicks in. And so, then you have this, like, monumental variable rate going on because it's the variable rate plus the fixed rate. And, and for a family of four, it, it's pretty eye-popping. So, yeah, I wish you good luck. You're between a rock and a hard place right now. This is not going to be an easy fix. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just to, just that, we are going to, going forward, take a deep dive into that area. And, and actually, I did look into questions and that triggered it. So, it, it is me, and I thank you for your comments.
I wanted to address some areas of cuts that I don't think have been fully explored. And I'll try to be indiscriminate and hate everybody so that everybody, each department head, will hate me equally. But I want to, I want to start with the police department's addition of one more person. And the language that Travis, if he's here, used twice, which I think is significant with respect to this extra person that he wants to add. He began his speech about it two times by saying, "I'm looking into the future, and therefore, I want to add this extra person." And when I hear that language, I think, this is something that could wait a year. There's eighty thousand dollars that's for one additional person, and it could wait a year. And if you wanted to make a compromise for some reason, you could say, well, let's not hire him for the first half of the year. This extra he or she person that we need, that could be hired for the future. Let's wait until half of the year is passed, and then we'd only need forty thousand dollars in that budget, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for that extra person. And that would save forty. I, I think we could save, in my mind, the full eighty by just listening to what Travis was saying. I, I think we could save, in my mind, the full 80 by just listening to what Travis was saying. This would improve things for the future. And I, I have, I'm happy with our police department. I want them to have everything that they possibly can. But this is a place that I think can work. And nobody else used that language about the future. They talked about the now, they needed something now. With respect to the general administration part, remember that a lot of the jobs that, or quite a few of the jobs that Laura Dolgan was doing, a city manager, moved on to the controller. And her salary, Rebecca pointed out, was increased by 16% because she assumed any number of tasks that would be, being done by the city manager. Well, if she's doing the tasks and she got the increase, we don't need the increase for the city manager because she's, or she, or he, whomever you hire, will be doing fewer tasks. So we don't need as large an increase, we don't need an increase at all. Take out that 16% everywhere across the board, in water and sewer and administration. And I would say that probably is about $20,000 less that you need there in water and sewerage. With respect to the streets department, I don't, I don't want to let them off with a free pass. Tom has been functioning with fewer people. I, I think quite a few employees left him this year, and they haven't rehired. And he's managed to function. So if we can cut everywhere else, we can cut there. In addition, he added somewhere $20,000 for the supervision of the two men that work in the rec department that are actually street employees. And those men have been there for quite some time, and streets has been supervising them without the additional $20,000. So I think we can certainly cut 20,000 there and have Tom reconstruct and, and do something with the streets department. And I don't want to leave out rec. Because the other departments that we're talking about, they are necessities. We can't live without the policemen or, and the firemen and volunteers. Administration's got to control what's happening, and we need streets, water and sewerage to function. But rec is one of our, I'm not saying it's not important, but it is an extra. And it serves not only our community, but it serves many of the communities around that we pay for their recreation. And I would suggest to you that you can cut at least 20,000 there and, and have it work out. That we could, that we would go forward and we would function without that extra 20,000. Just some suggestions about cuts that I think you can fairly make and not hurt anybody. And we're not talking about going below what we currently have. We're talking about not increasing, and, and you wind up with a little bit less of a percentage increase. And you show the public that you, you have been looking at this, I know you have been. But sometimes it's hard for a councilman who's working with, let's say, the police department to say, oh, you don't need an extra man, or you don't need, need him for an extra half a year because you're working with him. So I'm just saying, an outsider who they can kick, hopefully not physically, but just around. It might be the person who can say, I take some cuts here.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Bernier?
Madam Mayor and City Council, I mean none of you any disrespect. But I can't stand here and not say anything. I've been dealing with this verbal abuse since March, either here or behind the scenes from Mr. Curtis. And I will no longer deal with that. If he's got something to say, he can come right out and say it. I'm done with this.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to see if there's anyone from the departments first, and then I'm going to adjust. Anyone from the department, anyone say anything? Sorry about that, didn't wait to do last.
Laurie Brand, resident of Newport City. I just want to speak to the water and sewer issue. And I, I will agree with, with what Ms. Gerlin said. In, in the sense that with that installation of my, our personal water meter at my residence, we saw a great decrease in the amount we were paying. And, I don't know, a year or two ago, when this came up about increasing the water and sewer rates to make up for that difference, I went to my husband and said, tell me what the money is, tell me what the difference is. We did the math and really realized, and I don't have those figures in front of me today, but realized it would be years for us to get from where, what we were paying in the, in the fixed rate piece to what, to the set rate, to what we were paying with our water meter. And, and I said to him, you know, we, we got a shortfall here. So while many residents were saying, don't increase the water and sewer rate, I had already been paying the higher price for, I don't know, what, six, 15, 13, 14 years, 15 years before we got our water meter. So it wasn't going to impact me to the point where it might, it might sum. But I just really felt like we really need to look at that because I was totally gobsmacked last week when, when Mr. Johnson brought those figures. I had no idea that we were running with that kind of deficit in water and sewer, and we have to do something.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Any further discussion by the council?
We're voting on the general fund budget.
Yes.
Want to make that clear?
Okay. And for motion to set the budget, the general fund budget? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. I would like to have a roll call, and I would like to hear the percentage of the increase.
Percentage of the increase?
15.04.
15.04? How does that affect a $100,000 home?
That's a negative decision, we would have to look back and go back to you on that one.
Okay. And I would like to have a roll, I think I have a?
Yeah, I'm going to give you the roll call right now. Council?
I voted to approve it. Far too long we've been trying to make our budget smaller as the supermajority in legislature increases theirs. And time has come, we've got to take care of ourselves.
Thank you, council.
I voted aye. Nay.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Gerlin?
I, I just want to make, make it clear. I know you're postponing water rate increases, but it was my understanding you were going to vote on the water and sewer budget just as you were voting on the general fund. You specifically just said you were voting on the general fund. I would ask you to vote on the water and sewer budget as well.
Second.
Fine.
Okay. Second motion, so we're all clear here. Now, may I have a motion to vote on water and sewer?
Someone.
I have a motion to vote second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
And I think, Madam Mayor, I think the roll call was the same?
Yes.
And what is, what is the increase?
Increase, yes?
Looks like bottom line is 5.7%.
Five? Five point seven.
Six.
Five point seven six. For water and sewer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to the next agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Well, but we're done with this, so.
I had my hand up before you.
Oh, I apologize, then, please go ahead.
No, it's just for clarification. So the water and sewer budget you passed, which is, you know, fine. But we can expect an increase in our water sewer. So what we're, what we're voting on when we go in March is not actually what it's going to be in longer. We obviously need to raise water and sewer rates. Right?
Yes, and I apologize, I did not see you over there. Blended in there. Okay, moving on to the next agenda. New business. Council member?
No, thank you.
Mr. President?
No.
Council member?
No, thank you.
Controller?
No, thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Yeah, I do, I've got a special events permit, this, a motion. It's on a new business, but this is a new one. This is for Northern Cigars, Northern Cigar Tasting, is what it is. I'll read what it's for. This tasting event is to introduce the customers of Northern Cigars, especially, to the products of Kingdom Fermentary, as they are the latest war to carry the products. But evidently, there's Northeast Kingdom Fermentary as a new outfit, I guess, and just presenting their wares to see if the store wants it.
Okay. May I have a motion for the special events permit to be granted to Northern Cigar Tasting?
Someone.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments? Other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Anything else? Next item, old business. President Wilson?
No.
Councilman Shaw?
No, thank you.
Councilman Shaw?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Ms. Terry?
No, thank you.
No.
Ms. Johnson? Okay. Do you need me to sign anything, or are you good with that? You're good with the permit? All said?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, adjournment. But before we get there, I want to thank everybody and tell you that your comments were highly valuable. And they are, I respect everybody. This is a tough discussion, and I want to thank everybody for that. So do I hear a motion to adjourn the special meeting at 11:27? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.